Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular City Council meeting of Thursday, February 27, 2025. Public participation to this meeting is provided in person and remotely via Zoom in accordance with Mass General law. The Zoom link can be found on the city website. This meeting is also being televised and recorded by PBD-TV and the City Council Sonographer. Please join me for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, Counselor Gould. You all heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. We're going to move on to Item 4A hearings. This is a Ward 4 matter, so I am going to ask Counselor Manning Martin to step in as the pro tempore, and I am going to ask the clerk to read the meeting notice. Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD-Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Game Time North Shore LLC, DBA Game Time Lanes and Entertainment, 210 Andover Street, PBD-Mass, requesting a pool and billiard license at said 210 Andover Street, PBD-Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov. Under City Calendar, on the homepage, or contact the city clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councilor Julie K. Daigle, City Council President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would the petitioner please come up to the podium, state your name and address into the record, and tell us what you would like to do? Thank you.
My name is Tony Sorrentino. I am one of the owners at Game Time Lanes and Entertainment. Address is 210 Andover Street, which is North Shore Mall, and we are here tonight to request four billiards tables at our establishment.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor? Is anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone on Zoom to speak in favor? Being none. Is there anyone in the audience in opposition to the petitioner? Is anyone in the audience in opposition? Anyone on Zoom in opposition? Being none. Counselor Daigle.
Thank you, Madam Pro. Thank you, Mr. Sorrentino, and welcome. You guys have been before us a few times. I'm sorry we didn't do it all at once, but you have a great facility, and it's not often that we have new pool tables coming in, so I don't see any problem, or I haven't heard of any objection. I'm fully supportive of this opening up to my colleagues if they have any questions or concerns, but otherwise, thank you for, again, your large investment at the North Shore Mall in PBD. So any other counselors, please, questions, comments, or concerns?
Any counselors, any comments? Being none, Counselor Daigle.
Motion to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion to approve Game Time North Shore LLC, DBA Game Time Lanes and Entertainment, 210 Andover Street, PBD-Mass, requesting a pool and billiards license for four billiard tables at said 210 Andover Street. So moved.
You heard the motion. Remarks on the motion? Being none. Roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Congratulations.
Thank you, City Council. Appreciate it.
All right. Good luck.
Good evening. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the second hearing, Item 4B, entertainment license. If the clerk wouldn't mind reading the hearing notice. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 27, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD-Mass, and remotely via Zoom on the application from Endless Hibachi and Sushi LLC, 82 Newbury Street, PBD-Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and radio, and live entertainment, specifically karaoke, at said 82 Newbury Street, PBD-Mass. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov. Under Calendar, on the homepage, or contact the city clerk's office. PBD City Council, Councilor Julie K. Daigle, City Council President. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The petitioner is at the podium. If you wouldn't mind giving your name, address for the record, and a little summary of this application. Thank you, Chair.
Hi, my name is Sol Titch. I'm of Endless Hibachi and Sushi in 82 Newbury Street, PBD-Mass. Thank you for having me, and I just want to apply for entertainment license for karaoke.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone that would like to speak in objection? Is there someone on Zoom? Would anyone like to speak in favor on Zoom? Or in objection on Zoom? Or in general? We have a hand up. We're going to Zoom you in.
Hi. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Stanley Greglich. I'm a notified abutter of Huntington Wood. I live at 4503 Deerfield Circle. And first, I'd like to start out by saying I support small businesses and things they do to advance, but a couple of things here concern me as a abutter from Huntington Wood. And it's specifically the karaoke part only. Basically, I believe this business person wants to increase the volume of customers, and I think that's a good thing for most businesses. However, I visited this location last Friday afternoon and drove through there, and I see a very serious problem relating to traffic and especially parking. Two of the businesses of the four in that location already have paid permit parking spaces. I forget the exact numbers on both sides, but as you approach off Route 1 to come into that location, the road narrows, the parking space is very tight, and there's very, very significantly limited parking for customers, I believe, because of the Pulse Fitness also in there. And there's no parking on the other side of the building facing the car wash, and the back has very, very few spots back there. So my concern would be the karaoke part attracting a lot of people. I know, I haven't been in the interior of this Hibachi location. Most Hibachi places I've been to have a lot of tables and so forth, so I'm not sure how they would set up for that, but I think the attraction of the customer base volume is a consideration for traffic safety, parking. I'm surprised the fire department signed off on this pretty easily, it looks like. I saw a attached letter, because you could fit an ambulance into that street, but I don't think you'll fit a large fire truck through there, especially to go around the back, because the only way out, you have to go around like a U-turn to go out back onto Route 1. And by the way, that lane on Route 1 on that side is basically kind of a high-speed lane to the on-ramp on Route 128, and there's a stoplight just before this building, you know, where the Jason Stone building is. And usually cars sometimes jump out of those two lanes to go over to the 128 side at the last minute, especially if they're looking for this hidden location of the Hibachi Grill. So that would be my only concern if, you know, the city inspector and a few folks regarding this license would look at the capacity issues there and traffic and public safety. I don't see any direct impact to Huntington Wood, which is about 100 feet on the other side, which is why all of the community got letters as abutters. Unless there was outdoor activity, then that would make a difference. But since it looks like most of it's indoors, that part of it is okay. So I normally support a business. I have no problem with the TV and so forth, but the karaoke is a concern, but I'm mostly concerned because of the impact of traffic and public safety. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to speak in favor or opposition? And there's no one else in the audience that wants to speak. Counselor Gamache.
Yes, thank you. To answer some of the gentleman's questions, this is an existing building. It's got all its permits. All the parking requirements have to meet before another business goes in there. They've met all the requirements. It's on Route 1. They have a very good business, and they're trying to expand their business to make a little bit more money. The fire department can get around there. I've been in the establishment. I frequent the car wash. There's no problems up there. So I don't know where he's coming from, but anyways, the petitioner and I spoke prior to the meeting, and we have, he primarily wants the live entertainment, the karaoke from 8:00 PM to 1:00 AM. He submitted for Friday and Saturday, but after conversation with him, you know, he said he might want a Thursday night occasionally or a Sunday night occasionally, so I'm going to add that request to the petition. And the non-live entertainment is 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. It's just music. So I don't have any other questions concerning this matter, and I open it up to the council.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that I've been to the establishment at least six times. It might be February a little bit, maybe eight, but it's very good. He does have a good clientele. I've never had a problem parking at the location, and I don't see where there would be an issue with fire apparatus there. I'm sorry, respectfully to the resident. You know, I'm glad, I hope he does bring more business to Route 1 and more business to his establishment. I've met here personally. Each time I was at his establishment, came over to introduce himself, and he's a gentleman, he's a good manager, a good owner, and I'm very confident that this won't be an issue there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Through to Counselor Gamache, there was a response from the collector in there about some past due taxes. They're not significantly past due, but I just wanted to know if you had an update on that.
I didn't speak with that to the, if I may. I didn't speak to the petitioner about this tax bill that is outstanding. You're a little bit late. You got, through you, Madam President?
Counselor, I have a receipt here that it was paid last week.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Any other counselors?
Yeah, that was great. I still have the floor.
I'm sorry?
I still have the floor.
Yes.
Thank you. Great. I'm glad to hear that was collected. Thank you for making that payment. The only thing that I saw in here that's a little unusual is for live entertainment going right up to 1:00 AM. It doesn't really typically fit well with, like, Last Call and so forth. Typically, the live entertainment ends at 12:30. Does that mean that, what do you anticipate that flow to look like at the end of the night there?
I put to 1 because of license for 1, but Last Call probably 12, 12:30, and then we set everything down after that.
Right. So, I mean, I'm not going to tell you how to run your business, but cutting off the entertainment, the live entertainment, you could still keep the non-live entertainment going right to the end, but typically, we see these things ending at 12:30, so that would be my suggestion for this. I have no problem, Counselor Gamache, with the expanded days, but that would be the suggestion, would be to adjust it from 1:00 AM to 12:30, just so that it syncs up better with the whole Last Call flow. I see you nodding. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Any other counselors? Back, oh, Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to add, get some clarity on the hours of non-live entertainment. I noticed it doesn't say what days of the week. It just says 10 to 1. Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
I think the response was 70s. Correct. Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Higgins. Counselor Gamache.
May I move to close the public hearing?
So moved. You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At this time, I move approval on the application from Endless Hibachi and Sushi LLC, 82 Newbury Street, PBD-Mass, requesting an entertainment license for the use of non-live entertainment, specifically television and radio, and live entertainment, specifically karaoke, at said 82 Newbury Street, PBD-Mass, with the following conditions. The non-live entertainment will be 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM, seven days a week. The hours of live entertainment will be 8:00 PM to 12:30 AM, Thursday through Sunday. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. The petitioner is nodding his head. Any comments? Seeing none. Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Moving on to reports of committee. Finance Committee. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Present for the committee were Counselors Gamache, Gould, Manning Martin, Turco, and myself. Also present were Counselors Welton, Peach, Higgins, and Rozignol. We had three items on the agenda. The first item was to amend Section 18-21 entitled "Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining," Public Works Form and Water. That was presented to the committee by His Honor, the Mayor, and he explained that this was going to impact the position currently held by Mr. Mike Velez. The mayor addressed a couple of questions, and there was a motion made by Counselor Gamache that included a correction to the text that was originally submitted by the mayor in that this position does not have any involvement with the sewer department. So the motion from Counselor Gamache was as follows. City of PBD, Massachusetts, an ordinance amending Section 18-21 entitled "Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining," be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows. Section 1, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan is hereby amended as follows. The code of the City of PBD as adopted January 23, 1969, and amended is hereby further amended by deleting from 18-21 the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan for Public Works Form and Water effective July 1, 2025, $89,102, and replacing with Public Works Form and Water effective March 1, 2025, in an amount of $107,302. That motion was to draft and advertise. That motion, Madam President, passed the committee unanimously, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. You all heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? A roll call vote, please.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The next item on the agenda was transfer fund police salaries in amount $185,000, police overtime in amount of $70,000, and police longevity in amount of $30,000. That was presented to the committee by the Director of Finance, Mrs. Jengres. This was to address some retroactive payments for police captains for the period of July fiscal year 2022 through February fiscal year 2025, and also some retroactive payments for patrol and superior officers that qualify for additional steps and longevity based on service. With that explanation, there was a motion made by Counselor Gould as follows. Move to approve transfer request from Budget Reserve, account number 1000132057410, in amount of $201,283, and unreserved fund balance, free cash, account number 10000000035901, in amount of $83,711.97, for a total of $285,000. Two, police salaries, account number 100021005110, in amount of $185,000, and police overtime, account number 1000210051110, in amount of $70,000, and police longevity, account number 10000210051180, in amount of $30,000, totaling $285,000. Madam President, that motion passed the committee unanimously, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. You all heard the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. The last item on the agenda was a transfer of funds Rusolo site assessment in amount of $82,500. That was presented to the committee by His Honor, the Mayor. He explained that the money was needed to complete the city's due diligence process, the Phase 2 environmental study of the Rusolo property. The work is to take place in the next few months. It will extend out the potential walkaway date for the city on this proposed purchase out to July 20, and now with an anticipated close date of August 20. The mayor additionally verbally asked for us to add to this request as he presented. The amount that they had initially requested, the $82,500, did not cover the wells that also need to be tested. That is an additional $56,500. So the motion made by Counselor Gould included that additional verbal request from the mayor of $56,500, and that will come from the same source, the bond premium reserved for projects fund. So with that, Counselor Gould made the following motion. Move to approve transfer request, bonds premium reserved for projects, account number 27000033015, in an amount of $139,000. Two, Rusolo site assessment, account number 3000000584792025, in an amount of $139,000. So moved.
You heard the motion? Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin. Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. That completes the report of committee.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Moving on to the committee of the whole. All counselors were present for this committee, and we received a report of progress. No votes were made, and that is the end of the report of the committee of the whole. We're going to move on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Turco.
No motions.
Counsel, thank you, Counselor Turco. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. President, under suspension of rules, move to receive and approve, adopt as advertised, Item 10A, an ordinance amending Section 19-81 entitled Parking Prohibited Handicap Zone of the Code of the City of PBD. This is for Union Street, which is a motion I made last month. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. You heard the motion? Roll call vote.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Welton.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
Motion carries 11 to 0.
Thank you, Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. No further motions.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Counselor Gould.
No motions, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Counselor Gamache.
Yeah, I'll take this one for you, Madam President. Under suspension of rules, move to receive 9A, a petition from Verizon for conduit location Prospect Street, set up a public hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
Under suspension of rules, 9B, utility contractor's license, EV excavation LLC, 5 Alden Street, Davis, HP excavation LLC, 9 Tuxbury Road, Plasdon, New Hampshire. Move approval, all papers being in order.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
9, under suspension of rules, 9C, taxi driver license, James Kozick. License 10, Keith Richards. Keith Richards. Come out of retirement. License 12, move approval, all papers being in order.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Gamache.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gamache. Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Madam President. I have no motions or resolutions this evening, but I would like to take a moment to thank the DPS Department. Over the last couple of weeks, it was challenging with the snow removal and potholes repairs. I made many requests, and they moved on them rather quickly, so I'd like to thank the entire DPS Department for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Higgins. Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Clerk Danforth. If we could, could you put together for the council the minutes of the meeting, for the center school renovation project, uh, that was presented to the council last year? I, I don't know what month it happened. Anyone?
Thank you, Counselor Manning. I think we bought, we voted, um, roughly guessing in August to bond for that, just to give a rough idea.
If you could put together the meeting minutes of, of that meeting for us, I would appreciate it. So moved.
You heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Manning Martin.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manning Martin. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, move to receive item 8D in scheduled public hearing. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, move to receive item 8B and send to the planning board and also ICD for recommendations. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Welton.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, just to ensure that South Peabody doesn't get missed next snowstorm, I'd also like to thank the Department of Public Works for all their hard work. They're the best. Uh, no further motions.
Thank you, Counselor Welton. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 8C and refer to item 9D. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? It's a vote. Is there a separate motion for the hearing, Counselor McGinn?
Uh, yeah, because that's, uh, 8A, 8C is essentially an adjustment to, uh, 9D. So, uh, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9D and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9E and set up a public hearing. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, under suspension of the rules, uh, actually not suspending the rules, move to set up a public hearing, uh, and request department comments for the outdoor dining application from Show You Holdings LLC received, uh, on December 12th, 2024. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor McGinn.
Uh, no further motions. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor McGinn. Counselor Rozignol, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive item 8A and refer back to the building commissioner with the intent for this to go to the ZBA. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. You all heard the motion. Any discussion? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Madam President. On the motion, I just, um, wanted to, uh, say that I reviewed this application as well, and I know you and I had a conversation. I, I concur with Counselor Rozignol that based on what has been submitted, it's, it's not, uh, proper for this to be before us as submitted. So I totally, uh, agree with the motion and plan to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors McGinn and Counselor Rozignol. So we are referring this back to the building commissioner for an opinion, for this to go before the ZBA because it's by right before us. So, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, a co-motion with you, Madam President, to ask the Health Director, Sharon Cameron, to assess the annex at the center school. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any discussion? Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, through you to Counselor Rozignol. I just want to thank you for making that motion. I've received several phone calls over the last few days about issues at the center school that include the areas we currently have students in, so, um, I look forward to a prompt response from the Health Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Any other counselors?
I am going to echo Counselor Peach's concerns where this school is in Ward Four. I've spent most of my day fielding calls with complaints about the center school, so I think, um, the council needs to be brought up to speed. So I appreciate this co-motion with you, Counselor Rozignol. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. And under co-motion, um, with Madam President, to get an update on costs of the center school up to date from, uh, Jim Politano, as well as, um, status update of the center school project and, um, the future of the pre-K moving forward. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Counselor Rozignol. Could you include on that, um, dates of any bids that have gone out over the, since we, I mean, the council bonded for the money. I'd like to know, um, we bonded early and closed the school early, anticipating that we would need lead time to order things. I'd like to know when those orders were placed, um, when the bids went out and, you know, kind of get like a full timeline, not just a status report of where we stand now, but how we got to where we are.
So amended.
You heard the amendment from Counselor Peach with details of the timeline with the budget of the center school project that we bonded for. Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Rozignol.
Thank you, Madam President. No further motions.
Thank you, Counselor Rozignol. Counselor Melville.
Under suspension of the rule, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item, item 9F, all papers being in order. So moved.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Melville.
No further motions. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. I, uh, would like to announce, or the clerk has asked me to remind everyone that on March 11th, um, at 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, the Student Government Day will have our meet and greet at the high school for our student current parts. So I hope that all of the counselors can, can join us for that. And Counsel, um, Madam Clerk, what, remind me when Student Government Day is? In April. All right. We'll remind you at the next meeting of that. I know, I should have pulled it up. Um, April 3rd, Counselor Peach tells us. So, um, save the date for students and anyone else that wants to tune in. And anyone that would like to, um, participate in city government nomination papers are now available at the city clerk's office. So, um, that is your right to go and pull them and run for office in next week. I'm sorry. Well, it's Thursday, Monday. Thank you. All right. Any other business before us? Motion to adjourn by Counselor Gamache. So moved. Thank you.